Good evening, everyone. It is September 23rd, 2025. It is 6 o'clock on the dot and time for us to call to order this meeting of the City of Gallatin Council Committee. We start with the roll call with Ms. Kitchell, please.
Vice Mayor Hayes, he is absent. Councilman Alexander.
President.
Councilman Carter.
President.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
Councilman Juwans.
Hi, ma'am.
We do have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you so much. There are no minutes for you to consider this evening, so we'll move along to public recognition. This is a council committee meeting, so all public recognition is at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak on something that's on the agenda or something that's not on the agenda, this would be your time. You have five minutes. We ask that you come to the podium here. We ask for your name and your address for the record. And with that, public recognition is now open, and you may come forward if you wish to speak. And somehow, there's no one springing out of their seats to run forward and make comments, so I will declare public recognition closed and move along to Mayor's comments. And even though Vice Mayor Hayes isn't here tonight, they're pretty brief. But I'm going to start with our HR Director, Ms. Courtney Ken Jimmy, because she has an even more important introduction to make.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to announce that we have hired, and our new Assistant Director of Human Resources has started. So this is Sheila White.
Yeah, thanks.
And she started with us yesterday, so this is day two. She came back. We're very glad of that. And she comes to us from White House, where she spent 18 years in municipal government in various capacities. So you will have interaction with her in the future, but is there anything you'd like to say?
No.
No.
Well, I just look forward to serving the employees and citizens of Gallatin.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're delighted to have you. And just, I'll add that I just learned that Stephen Carter goes to church, that you guys go to church together. So you're not unfamiliar to Gallatin either, and so we're grateful for you coming to work for the City of Gallatin, and we hope you'll enjoy it. I think you will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just a few events to tell you all about. Coming up Thursday nights, the Flower Market on the Square, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. On Friday, there's a Red Cross Blood Drive at the Civic Center, 11:00 to 4:00. Also on Friday morning, starting at 7:30, Road Superintendent Toby Ellis will be there for the Legislative Breakfast that happens once a month, sponsored by the Gallatin Chamber. Friday night is the Mayor's Cup Challenge. That means that Station Camp and Gallatin High School will be playing for the Mayor's Cup at Station Camp High School. That happens at 7:00 p.m. This Saturday, lots and lots of stuff. UFFA softball tournament at Triple Creek, a 5K Run Walk for Those in Need at Triple Creek Soccer Parking Lot at 7:00 a.m. The Alpha Games is happening actually in Lebanon. That's a first responder competition. That's from 9 until 3:00 at the Jimmy Floyd Center. Southern County Casa is hosting Cars for Casa, Half Batch Brewing from 1:00 to 4:00. There's also in Gallatin, an antique and classic car shows, as there is every weekend, at the Civic Center from 4:00 to 8:00. There's a Serenity in the South Expo at Triple Creek Park, which I don't know what that is, but I sure like the name of it. And then the Art of Albert Baugh. We have had some exposure to this gentleman. He comes by our office every now and again. He is a fabulous artist, is going to be having an exhibit at the Gallatin Public Library and the reception opening that is from 11:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. on this Saturday. The softball tournament continues on Sunday. Courtney Ken Jimmy's birthday is on the 29th. Oh, there was another thing. I actually clipped this out of Tennessean today. This is happening this Saturday, the 27th. It's Tennessee Serves the National Public Lands Day. It's about engaging with public lands while giving back. To that end, volunteer for a two-hour shift to weed, remove invasive plants, pick up trash, and more at Bledsoe Creek State Park. So from this, it tells me that if you're interested in helping, and I think it sounds like a great opportunity to learn about invasive plants and weeds. It's from 9 until 1:00, and it says to meet at the Visitor Center in Gallatin and, of course, Bledsoe Creek State Park. I thought that was pretty good. And then coming up on the second, Gallatin High School Career and College Fair on the 4th, Breakfast of the American Legion, Main Street Festival coming up on the 4th. That's 10 until 4:00. And then the annual Candlelight Cemetery Tour is that evening from 5:00 until 10:00. And then the next weekend is the Music City Stole. So that's all the events I'm going to mention this evening, and that will move us along to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is a presentation on two new state laws that allow for infrastructure development districts. Mr. Rosemary Bates, our Executive Director of Economic Development, is going to introduce it, but I'll introduce her by introducing that we have had some inquiries about this. I've actually had both commercial representative organizations and presidential representative people talk to me about using IDDs here in Gallatin, and so we felt like it would be appropriate for everyone to have the opportunity to learn more.
Thank you for that. Yes, the first IDD law act was passed in 2024, and then there is a second act, not a revision of the first one, but a totally separate act. One of them is residential-related, and one of them allows for commercial. And this is very new, but it's very quickly become very popular for developers to consider. And we thought it best, because you may be getting a proposal for one sooner than we anticipated, that the Bradley Law Firm, who helps us with a lot of our policies and also writes a lot of the state law, come and explain to you what they are. Tom Trent would have been here tonight because of the storm. He has sent Mr. Murphy, and I'll introduce him in just a second, in his place. He had to drive to Oak Ridge. So I apologize on his behalf, but I do understand. I'd want to get there ahead of a storm, too. But this is Jim Murphy with the Bradley Law Firm, and I've worked with him remotely in the past, but through Tom, I hear fabulous things about Mr. Murphy, and I do respect what he does, and I've learned a lot from him myself. So Mr. Murphy with the Bradley Law Firm.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Rosemary. I apologize that you're stuck with me instead of Tom, but as Rosemary said, he had to go to Oak Ridge, and so I told him I'd be happy to fill in. As Rosemary's described, that we've got two state statutes that were adopted, one in 2024 and one in 2025. And I'll go through the 2024 one first, because they're very similar. There's some differences, but by and large, they create the same mechanism for funding of public infrastructure. And the statutes provide for the creation of a Special Assessment District that can create a funding mechanism to fund public infrastructure without it being required to be funded by the city taxpayer. So it basically is a special assessment that is assessed on all the property within the district, and then that money is used to pay for the public infrastructure. Again, it's an alternative method for funding as opposed to taxes, and it involves a levying collection of an annual special assessment. The districts can be created in what's called a host municipality. And a host municipality is if the district is in one city, then that's the, and the city imposes and collects adwarem taxes, real property taxes, then that can be the host municipality. If the district is in either two cities or a city or in the county, then the county is the host municipality. So the default, if it's in multiple jurisdictions, is it goes to the county. If it's in a jurisdiction, and I've actually had this happen, if it's in a jurisdiction that doesn't collect adwarem taxes, then it's the county. So the idea is that it's tied to the jurisdiction that it's located in if that jurisdiction collects taxes, property taxes, and then otherwise, it defaults to the county. Infrastructure for purposes of the Special, the Infrastructure Development District Act includes streets, roads, bridges, sidewalks, water, wastewater, basically all the public infrastructure that would typically be connected with a development. And the infrastructure has to benefit the properties within the district as described in the resolution establishing the district. And that doesn't require that the infrastructure actually be located in the district. It can benefit the district. For example, if you've got a district that needs a sewer extension over a good distance, that some of that property is not in the district, that's still eligible as long as it's benefiting the district. So again, it has to be, it has to be, the district has to receive the benefit from the infrastructure, even if it's not located in there. The district is established by the filing of a petition that's signed by a developer and the owners of all the parcels within the district. So all the property owners have to be a part of the petition. You can't do one of these where you have unhappy owners in the district. Everybody has to sign on to the petition. And the petition has to set forth the name of the district, which has to include the words Infrastructure Development District. It has to identify the host municipality, the boundaries of the district. There has to be a list of all the parcels that are in the district with the owner's name and address. And it has to have a site development plan for the district, showing the area that's anticipated to be used for residential housing. And that includes both owner-occupied and rental housing. It has to have the name and address of the developer. It has to have a description of the infrastructure that will be required to develop the district. It has to have an estimated infrastructure cost for that infrastructure, and then it has to have a proposed rate of the levy of the special assessment to be imposed. And so those are the primary requirements for the petition. Then the criteria in the 2024 act, the district had to be composed of not less than five acres. So you had to have at least five acres. You had to have a capital cost of the development of the district of not less than $5 million. And at least one-half of the area of the district had to be used for residential housing, whether it was single-family or multifamily. And so that's one of the reasons why you have to have the site development plan to show that the development of the district will include at least half of the area will be used for residential housing. After the petition is filed, the governing body of the host municipality has to conduct a public hearing, and that has to occur not less than 30 and not more than 45 days following the filing of the petition. The petition has to be approved by a resolution of the governing body, by a majority vote. And then after the petition is filed, the host municipality can borrow money to issue bonds, notes, or other obligations for purposes of the infrastructure, or they can delegate the issuance of bonds, notes, and other indebtedness to either the Industrial Development Board or to a public building authority. Most of the communities that have done this so far have delegated it to the Industrial Development Board to issue the bonds instead of the city doing it directly. The maximum term of the bonds cannot exceed 30 years. The payment from the bonds, costs and expenses can be paid for infrastructure cost, administrative expenses, and principal premium and interest on the bonds. The special assessment has to have a rational allocation process so that you can, and the statute sets forth a base, several bases that can be considered. In the 2024 act, those were frontage, so you could do it. And you see frontage a lot of times on road projects. You know, you basically say, we'll break it up based on how much frontage you have on the road. But you can also do it based on acreage, area, proportion of assessed value, or any combination of those. But there has to be a rational basis for the assessment to be allocated between all the various properties within the development. Special assessments can't be imposed on property owned by governmental entities unless the governmental entity approves the special assessment on the property. Another thing that the statute provides is that the governing body of the host municipality can adopt policies and procedures to set forth more details on things like how you file an application, what information has to be included, whether it's reviewed by staff before it's presented to the governing body. Those things can all be handled in policies and procedures that the local government can create. I know Knox County did policies and procedures, and one of the things they required was that the sales contracts for all purchases with homeowners had to specifically state that there were, that a special assessment was going to be imposed on each of the homes so that there wouldn't be any buyers coming in later and saying, we didn't know you were going to do this. So that was one thing they did. They had, they've had, they've got a pretty detailed policy and procedure. There's an assessment lien that arises upon approval of the resolution of the district, and it's basically superior to any D trust mortgage or mechanics or material man's lien. And the only exceptions, it's not superior to state, county, or municipal taxes. So the property tax lien is the first lien, and basically, the assessment lien is the second lien behind those. There can be a penalty of 1% per month if the assessment's not paid on time, and the comptroller will annually audit the special assessment fund to make sure that the funds are being collected and properly distributed. So that's the basics of the 24 act. In 25, the legislature, as Rosemary noted, passed a new act, which is called the Real Estate Infrastructure Development District. And it is basically the same as the 2024 act, as far as what the funds can be used for and the process for completion and creation and assessments, with some minor tweaks. And one of the most important changes is it can be used for any project, residential or commercial. It doesn't have the five-acre minimum acreage requirement like the 24 act does. It doesn't have the $5 million capital expenditure requirement like the 24 act did. And there's no requirement that half of the property be used for residential purposes. So the 2025 act is much more flexible from the standpoint of which projects can use it and which, you know, size and capital contribution, capital cost, and whether it's mixed-use, whether, how much is residential and how much is commercial. All that is not mandated in the 2025 act. The petition that's required in the 2025 act has the same requirements in it as the 24 act, except you don't have to have a site development plan. And again, I mentioned, part of the reason for the site development plan under the 24 act was to show that you met the, half of the development was going to be residential. Well, there's no requirement for half the project to be used for residential, so they took out the site plan requirement. So that's, again, it doesn't have the site plan requirement. One of the things that is different, another thing that's different, is the cost and expenses that can be funded with the bond funds includes impact fees. Those can be funded under the 25 act. They can be paid for out of bond proceeds. They're not included in what can be paid out of bond proceeds in the 24 act. So that was added, I guess, because they realized after the 24 act that they missed something, and so they added it in 25. The other difference in the 25 act is when they're looking at the allocation of the special assessments, acreage is not listed as one of the criteria that can be considered, but area is. And so I'm not exactly sure how significant a difference it is if you can consider area as opposed to acreage. So those are the basic differences. A couple of things about these that sometimes I've seen some news articles that are, that have a little bit confused about why this is being done. The story's talked about how this was a way to impose or pass the cost of the infrastructure on to the homebuyers. Well, you know, the homebuyers have always been paying the infrastructure cost. It's baked into the cost of the land. It's baked into the cost of the home. If you do it this way, you can take, you can normally use tax-exempt financing for the public infrastructure. The IDB issues the bonds, so they're eligible issuer of tax-exempt financing. It's being used for public infrastructure, which is an eligible use for tax-exempt financing. So you can actually have a reduced infrastructure cost because you're not financing it at the market rate, you're financing it at a tax-exempt rate. So it does actually reduce the cost of the infrastructure by doing it that way. Typically, you see these when a single developer is developing one property because you've got the requirement that all the property owners have to sign the petition. So it's not like you're going to have multiple developers typically, unless they really are working together real closely, you won't have multiple developers in the same district. You'll have a single developer developing a large project that requires multiple infrastructure. So that's the basics. Obviously, there's a lot of details that will be project-specific for each project as they come along. And, you know, one of the things, as I mentioned, to consider is whether you want to look at creating policies and procedures that would be utilized by the developers. You could provide to developers so that they would have a process, that they would understand all the steps that they would have to take in order to get it approved. But that's totally the legislative body's call, so you can decide to do that or not. So that's my presentation. I'm happy to answer, to try to answer any questions, at least.
Councilman Juwans.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir. I have to be honest, I read, I already, I don't know how many times, trying to figure out what was the intent of it. And when I did that, I say maybe it's to lower housing cost. I'll come back to that later. The definition talk about developer, so are we talking about developer at the meaning we all understand, who's a real estate developer? Or a developer could be just a landowner who wants to do something in his area and, you know, do infrastructure upgrade? That's my first question.
So technically, yes, a landowner could be a developer. The challenge for that is, in order to submit the petition, there has to be an identification of the infrastructure and a cost of what that infrastructure was, is going to be. And typically, most landowners don't do that. They have a developer. They need a developer to really go through that process. But if a landowner wanted to do that on their own and develop their property on their own without an independent developer, yeah, as long as they could create the list of infrastructure that was going to be needed and the cost that could be, that are going to be assessed, that a landowner could do it.
All right, so let's go to developer as developer. The requirement is that the developer made the petition and a majority of, I don't remember how many, all the landowner.
All the landowners.
All the landowner make the petition. So if we're talking about a new development, generally, the developer is a landowner. He's going to own all the lots.
Well, most developers actually are not the landowner. They just have it under contract, and the landowner, so that's what it's really designed to get at, is that if I'm a developer and I've not bought the land yet, and I'm trying to get this approved, I can't do it without having the actual landowner sign the petition as well. So that's what that's trying to get at.
It's fair. So the developer has a land under contract, and of course, if he buy two property to put them together, the owner's going to sign on it because if it's a condition of buying the land, they're going to do it. So, and if we go to 784-716 in the first one, because there is almost, like you say, no difference with the first one and the second one, they're talking about reimbursing the developer for the prior payment of infrastructure cost. So I'm trying to understand on simple words. Basically, the developer's going to come, make the petition, the city is going to do a bond to pay for that development cost, and the development cost is going to be attached to the land as an extra tax for the next 30 years or for when the debt is paid. Yeah?
So I'll try to explain it, and if I miss something, you can please ask me to give you more clarity.
Yes.
So the concept is, the developer is going to install the infrastructure and basically utilize the bonds that are issued, the proceeds from the bond payments to reimburse the developer for the expenses that were paid for the eligible infrastructure that was reimbursed, that's going to be reimbursed. Then the bonds would be paid off with the special assessments that come in each year from the various land, or lot owners who have bought the property that's benefiting from the special assessments. So the special assessments will be utilized, they'll come in and then be utilized to pay off those bonds. So that's the process that the statute contemplates.
So we're on the same page. That's what I understood. So basically, if we look at what's happening now, a developer come, do an FMDP, he has to pay for the infrastructure. If he need to bring sewer on the property, he has to pay for it. He has to bring the sewer to all the lots. So now, the city is going to take a bond, reimburse the developer for all his cost, who are defined differently on 24, 25. I think 25, they're talking about parking. I don't think they talk about parking on 24. And that's going to be passed for the next 30 years as a special assessment tax, because it's a tax, to the person who's going to buy, is going to buy the property and get a new house. That's why, that's why I was conflicted with my initial idea to say it's going to lower, lower, you know, lower the cost of real estate, but that won't. That would just let the developer, because again, we're talking about, we're talking about money. So, and I remember being in a, with Mayor Brown years ago, being at the afternoon day organized by a land speculator, where he was making a comment that when the price of the lumber went skyrocketing, the, you know, the amp of the price of the arses, but when it went down, they stay where they are. So I don't see the developer lowering the cost of housing because he's not going to have to pay for infrastructure.
That is what the development community anticipates will happen, is that the cost of, the asking price of the house will go down. And again, their interest is with prices going up for all, for all the other reasons you just mentioned, like the lumber that goes in the mentioned, like the lumber that goes in the homes and all the other construction costs, that this will provide a mechanism to have a reduced total cost. Because right now, when the developer pays for that infrastructure, they pass that cost on to the lot buyer and then to the homebuyer. If the developer sells the lot to a builder, they pass that cost on to the builder. And then when the builder sells the house to a homeowner, they pass the cost on to the homeowner. When the homeowner buys that, that homeowner is going to finance that at a market rate of interest. If you do this approach, what you're getting is savings in the interest rate on the infrastructure if you can do it as a tax-exempt interest, because the rate of the interest on the bonds is going to be lower than the rate of the interest on your mortgage. And so there is an incremental savings in that approach.
But I was going to ask you to repeat that, because you'd said that earlier, and I want to make sure.
That is really what the whole idea here is, is that you're getting a lower cost on the infrastructure, because instead of financing it through the homeowner's mortgage, you're financing it through this special assessment mechanism.
I also had explained to me and the various people that I've met with regarding them that on the homebuyer side, it actually is viewed differently because you're actually getting a home loan for a lesser amount, because the assessment isn't calculated into that for the long term. There are mechanisms where it can be, i.e. you want to pay it off in advance, but it's not necessarily. And so it helps people that potentially don't want to take on a huge credit, even though they're going to have that liability at some period in time. There was one question that I did want to ask you, because we keep asking this question and we're getting different answers. But my understanding is that it is based on that the raw land is the collateral for the debt. But what does it do to the city's debt capacity? And is the city's bond rating a piece of the equation?
These are revenue bond, I mean, you could pledge your full faith and credit behind the bonds if you wanted to.
It's the assessments.
Yeah, that are based on the assessments. You could pledge the revenues from the assessment plus your full faith and credit if you wanted to, but you don't have to. Because you can just pledge the special assessment, which is a revenue, which should not affect the city's credit at all, because it's a revenue, and that's the only recourse for the bondholders, is payment from the special assessment. If the special assessment funds are not sufficient, that's an issue between the developer and, you know, the bondholders. Typically, they require some kind of developer guarantee to cover that, but at the end of the day, the city doesn't have to cover that.
But it's my understanding that this legislation was brought about to address affordable housing first and then to address the high cost of infrastructure and how it was continuing to go up. There's another point of clarification that I needed you to make, and now I can't remember it. Jen, the question?
Yeah, I was, I'm going to finish my thinking. I'm still skeptical, because we're talking about dollar stuff, because the storytellers and price don't go down, or where you need something really catastrophic to get the price go down, like the crash 2008, I think. Because I'm, you know, I'm on the aviation business, okay? When 2008 happened, the gas, the price of the jet to put on airplane did skyrocket. And all the companies, FedEx, UPS, Charter Company, airline, except software, because they did edging at the right time, they all had a fuel surcharge on there. And when the price of the gas went down, the fuel surcharge is still there. And it's still there, you know, 15 years or 17 years there. So I'm kind of skeptical for that. The only good thing I see is what we did recently, is that I would use that to, for the developer of the target, to, you know, because he got the 1.5 mill for infrastructure, I would use that for that, to ask him and do the request, so we can, you know, instead of constituents paying for the 1.5 mill, that would be, you know, the commercial properties were there, who pay back the special interest. That the only, for that, I have no issue. For industrial, commercial, I'm okay. But I don't really think that's going to lower the cost of housing. And hopefully, I'm wrong, but time will tell.
Okay, that's not a question. Did you have a question?
We are on a public forum. I can say what I think and discuss.
He was taking questions. I want to be respectful of the guest. Mr. Alexandria, recognize.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Murphy, for being here and letting Mr. Trent know there's always grace to go to Oak Ridge. There are three perfect grandchildren there, so I'm always good with that. Tell me where in the process of a project this would come in. Is this prior to the PDMP? Is this between the PDMP and the FMDP?
It's probably in-between in most cases, because of the need to really know what your infrastructure is going to be and what it's going to cost. This is not something that you would typically have that level of detail in a preliminary process. And I think that's one thing that some communities have said, is we want to have a policy of when you can do this, so that we can know the details in more detail than just coming in with a very vague plan. Because ultimately, you want to have a pretty good idea of what that infrastructure cost is going to be, because that's what's going to end up being the assessment on the various properties. And, you know, having that on a very preliminary, early basis seems to be a little bit premature.
It just seems like you want to get it nailed down before there's too many landowners, though.
Well, yeah, but again, yes, you definitely want to do it before the property is being divided up and sold. But typically, that's not, I mean, again, you can do it in phases if you're going to phase your development, so that you can do some of the infrastructure in phases. But at the end of the day, yes, you don't want to be selling lots before you've actually got this approved.
Okay. Last question, Mr. Murphy. I can see a lot of developments coming in wanting to use this and a lot of bonds being backed by the city of Gallatin. What's the dangers?
Well, again, the danger from the standpoint of, if the city is not pledging its full faith and credit, if it's just pledging revenues, the only real danger is that the assessments don't generate enough revenue to pay off the bonds. So I think that's an important thing to look at when it comes time to, you know, issue bonds, is, is there sufficient, you know, does their plan, does the absorption of the lots match the revenue flow that you're going to need to be able to pay off the bonds, so that there's not, at the end of the day, a deficiency? So I think that's a critical part of that, is just making sure that, you know, the bond analysis works. Lenders are typically going to make sure you do that, because they don't want that to happen. And so, again, the good part is, you know, as long as they sell the properties, you'll get the assessments, because everybody has to pay them. The risk is really that the project doesn't sell out, and then you've got these issues. I mean, again, if they plot the lots, the developer would be paying the assessments in the, you know, until such time as the lot's sold, so.
So there could be some builders on the hook, or?
Yeah.
I got you. Thank you.
Well, in theory, the developed land is more valuable, you know, land with infrastructure, it's more valuable than the raw land. I want to verify that the debt issuance can cover the cost to the city of an administrator or a third-party administrator, so that that is not a burden of the cities.
There is. There's a 5% cap for administrative costs, but yes, you can.
Do you know any of the background, several of the people that we have spoken with have talked a lot about being used in other states. Do you know any about other states they're using it?
It's very popular in a lot of states, and it's something that developers from other states have said for a while that we needed to do. We've had special assessment statutes in the books forever, but they really were not, they really were more designed for things like a city who wanted to use special assessments to extend or improve a street, or, you know, a water line or sewer line, and they didn't really work as well for a new project, a new development like this. And so that's kind of why this came about. So there has been, like I said, there's been special assessments in the law forever, but not many people have used them.
I've met with people that have had a lot of experience doing them, and particularly Florida and Texas. That seems to be two very popular areas. Questions? You have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, let me think about something and a question on a bond. I have two questions, one on a bond and one on the owner. We're talking about ratings. If the developer default on a bond, the city still have to pay the debt and try to recoup the money from the developer? Yeah?
Typically, again, that's a negotiation on the bond documents with the lender, but typically, these deals are done where there's not a recourse against the city to pay them off unless the city agrees to pledge its full faith and credit. And so the city has to affirmatively agree to that. There's not a default that if they don't pay it off, that it comes to you. So that's, you know, you've got protection there when you approve the bonds. And if you do it with the, if you delegate it down to the IDB, like a lot of other communities have, it's the same issue. The IDB can't commit the city, it being the city's credit. And also, since it's not issued by the city, it doesn't look like a city obligation, so it also mitigates the risk.
And my second question, on all I read, there is no, there was no mention on how to let the homeowners know, because I suppose when people buy that, they should be aware that they are on a special assessment district and they're going to get every year to pay more than the special assessment tax on top of it. There is nothing in the law, so that would come on the governing body to make sure, or how that work?
Like I said, in Knox County, what they did is, in their policies and procedures, they required the developer to disclose the annual special assessment in the purchase agreement for every property that was going to be subject to the special assessment. So they handled it through a policy or procedure. So that's one mechanism to do that.
What was recommended to us is that we have, you know, require a separate sheet of paper with a different color, you know, within the closing documents that they have to sign separately.
And the special assessment, is it a fix for the next 30 years, or that can change?
It's typically fixed. It's typically fixed. It can be, you can have it altered. Again, this is a policies and procedures kind of thing. For example, if you resubdivide property, and so you need to allocate between, you know, you had a larger tract and you now resubdivide it, you can reallocate it that way, but it's the same amount. It doesn't, the same amount gets assessed. It's just, it doesn't, the amount is fixed, yes.
You said that can be done on phases, and the law said that they can request reimbursement at the end. We have development here in a city that's been going on for 20-something years, where phases were not even finished yet. If someone like that, something like that was happening, the developer doesn't know with inflation, they can't really figure out what the cost of infrastructure is going to be in 10 years if they plan to develop in phases for 10 years. So how that work for, I'm on phase one, I come, I buy a house on phase one, I know there is a special assessment, but.
Typically, they would do it on a phase-by-phase basis.
So they would do a special assessment phase-by-phase? Okay.
Typically, that would be the case.
What other questions does anyone have? Interesting concept, also, in my conversations with various people, we've talked about being able to develop our own procedures, but then we've also been advised that sometimes it's better to have the developer bring them to you, because as soon as you develop your own policies and procedures, there's going to be something that doesn't fit or that you would have to change to make an accommodation for.
Just one thing to be clear, you're never obligated to approve it, okay? This is not one of those things, if I meet the criteria, I'm going to, you have to approve it. This is something that's purely in the discretion of the legislative body as to whether you're going to do it. So I don't think you've got, I mean, unless you say in your policies and procedures that if you meet these requirements, we're going to approve you, your policies and procedures won't bind you, because ultimately, under the statute, it's the legislative body's call as to whether you're going to approve these or not. There's no, if I do X, Y, and Z, you have to approve me. So this is purely a legislative decision that you can make, based on what you think is best for each individual project.
So where we stand now, with no enacting legislation, would we be able to approve an IDD that someone asked for?
You could. It's your call. It's your call.
Without any?
Yes, you could. Yeah, you could. You might, what you might want to do for initial ones is require the developer to create an individual set of policies and procedures for this on a project-by-project basis. And basically, say, we need you to provide us your proposed policies and procedures, and if you don't like them, you can say, we need you to add X, Y, Z. So yes, you could do that.
That was what was recommended to me, because they felt like there could be nuances with different ones that could make sense.
Different deals might be different. That's correct.
Also, to what you said about changes to assessments over time, I would think that they would need to be pretty constant, because I know that everyone I've spoken to has talked about, like, sometimes they would incentivize, like, a resale or something by prepaying the assessment, like you might the closing costs or something.
And again, that's something you can address in your policy and procedure of prepayments, and how you could, you know, basically pay off at a lesser rate, because you're not paying the interest on that amount.
Mr. Pan?
Could you just kind of summarize what this bill was created for, to prevent or promote?
Again, it's basically designed to provide a mechanism, to provide an alternative funding source for infrastructure, besides the taxpayers paying for it or the homeowners paying for it in their mortgage.
So in the end, it's going to be good for the guy purchasing the home, you think?
That's the idea, yes, that it would, that the net cost will be less, because they're not financing the infrastructure in their homeowner's mortgage, yes.
Thank you.
I have a problem when you just say the taxpayer financed infrastructure. On new development, the taxpayer doesn't finance infrastructure.
I know that's the case in Gallatin. It's not the case everywhere. And so that's why, when I say that, that's not necessarily the case in every community. So that's part of it. Yes, I understand in your community, and that's one thing to think about, is, you know, do you say to the developer, we're not going to finance all of your internal development infrastructure, but if you've got off-site infrastructure, we'll finance that, or if there's unusual infrastructure? That's the beauty of this, is you can kind of decide on each project which infrastructure you think the developer ought to eat and which infrastructure the special assessment can pay for. But again, to the extent that the developer is, quote, "eating" that infrastructure themselves, they're going to pass that on to the homeowners. And so the net cost of that kind of project is probably going to be a little bit higher.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Anyone else with any questions?
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bates, was there anything you wanted to add? Ms. Bates, was there anything you wanted to add?
Me?
No, I was asking Ms. Bates if she wanted to add anything to what you had said. You did a great job.
I was just going to add that depending on where you are in the state, there are all, already some of these that have been done or in process. In different communities are finding that some of the policies that they establish before a request is made are general enough that it can be adapted for each project. Some of them have found that they have made their policies and procedures way too cumbersome and wordy and challenging to even understand as compared to what the meaning of the state law is. So because this is so new, you have, again, you don't have to set them right away. I would think you want to set some minimum policies, but you may not want to try to solve every potential issue in your first set of policies. You may learn along the way and then add some in. But as Mr. Murphy said, you don't have to accept the request. You can turn down the request if you want to.
Is that fair?
Yes, absolutely.
Question from Ms. Bates. We talk about example in a state. Could you do a quick search and send us a couple of examples where it's done and how they do it? That doesn't have to be tomorrow, when, when you have time. So we can have, you know, I, I like to have read examples, so I can compare what's done and, you know, I can compare, because we talk of affordability. I want to see where it's done, the, actually the housing price, it can go down or not. So if you have, when you have time, that doesn't have to be tomorrow. I appreciate if you could send us something like that.
Yeah, I was also going to reach out and ask for some of the policies that have been actually voted on and implemented. Franklin is apparently struggling, because they had one that was too cumbersome and have had to throw it out and start over. So, so I am told. I do not live in Franklin. I do not sit on those boards, but...
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you both. I appreciate you. Okay, I can choose a presentation on sports facility development for economic and tourism growth. And to present that, we have Rosemary Bates, Executive Director of EDA, and Ms. Jenna Landstrom pulled it out, to introduce that.
Yeah, now, actually, Jenna and I are not presenting. We're just laying the groundwork for why Jeremy Hazelbaker, Mr. Hazelbaker, will be presenting tonight. But I met Jeremy Hazelbaker a few years ago, when he helped facilitate conversations about a prospective project that was considering Gallatin. As I've gotten to know him, it's evident that he has a lot of passion for young people, and when I say young people, small entry-level sports kids all the way up through high school and college. But he's just passionate about helping them, but he's also passionate for the Gallatin community. And he has shared his ideas and did a presentation to the Economic Development Agency Board and to the Industrial Development Board. And I think to some of you individually, maybe all of you, the EDA Board and the IDB thought it best that he bring his idea to the City Council. And as a courtesy to some of you who have championed Mr. Hazelbaker, we all thought that you should hear from him about the potential economic development impact and tourism impact. Gallatin is fortunate to be in a metro area with four professional sports teams. College and high school sports are also expanding for men and women, boys and girls. There's a lot of people playing sports today that, I'm dating myself. I did not even know were sports when I was in high school and college. They're new to me. And you can go professional in some of them. That makes no sense, but that's the world we live in. But the communities like ours, because of our, being in a metro area that has professional sports teams, we have the potential to gain anywhere from $500,000 to $5 million in additional revenue a year by one of the, by the idea that Mr. Hazelbaker is going to talk to you about. Metro areas with professional sports also attract investment funds and accelerators focused on sports tech and performance projects that could easily land in the metro area, not in Nashville proper. And they may find it more financially feasible to land in somewhere outside of metro Nashville and Davidson County. There is also the tourism dollar potential, and I'm going to let Ms. Landstrom join this introduction and tell you about that, and then she will introduce Mr. Hazelbaker.
Thanks, Rosemary. Good evening, Council. Like Rosemary said, Mr. Hazelbaker approached me probably about a month ago, telling me about some of his ideas on how to make sports tourism in Gallatin even more successful. And speaking of comparing cities, I wanted to do some research and find some data that compares some of our sports complexes to cities that have similar populations that also have complexes of similar specs. So spoiler alert, through this data research that I was able to perform, this comparison of these cities, it's clear that we're missing out on significant tourism dollars that we could be getting. And if you know me, you know, I'll say tourism money is real money. At the end of the day, state and local tax revenue from visitors save each Tennessee household more than $1,000 per year. So obviously, tourism is a huge deal in the state, and especially here in Gallatin. I'm a huge proponent of any effort that will help support tourism. So Mr. Hazelbaker and his passion for this initiative that he's going to talk to you guys about is just really exciting, and I wholeheartedly support it. So I am excited to introduce former St. Louis Cardinal and Arizona Diamondback, Mr. Jeremy Hazelbaker.
Thank you for that introduction. That was, that was amazing. Thank you. So as you guys can see, first off, Mayor Brown, council members, I appreciate your time tonight. As you can see, there's, there's opportunity, you know, and I'm going to go through that today and, and what we have in kind of showing what we're missing, right? So I'm typically, and my wife will kind of test this, I'm kind of a very blunt person, right? So I'm in here because I want to develop, right? We talk, we talk about, I come to this and hear a lot of talk about development. I want to develop Gallatin, but from a sports standpoint, right? There's so many opportunities, and a lot of them, I think, we're just missing the boat on. Where's the thing at? Oh, sweet. So. Going back. All right, so the ask. The ask is for a position to be created. That position's going to be for me to develop Gallatin as a sports destination, sports and tourism destination. Now, a few of the tasks that would fall on my plate, to be attracting tournaments and events, regional and national. So essentially, when we talk about events, we're talking about tournaments. We're talking about fundraisers, anything that can bring tourism dollars to the city, right? So I want to develop Gallatin and bring all those tourism dollars that I can from sports to the city. Developing partnerships with schools, clubs, and associations. Now, whether that's kind of what Rosemary spoke about, whether that's professional sports, whether that's club sports, so on a big scale, small scale, we're trying to do all that. We're trying to hit all those marks. Maximizing facility use and securing funding for improvements. Now, as I go through this presentation, you're going to understand that when I talk about facility use, right, I'm not talking about just city property, not what we have right now. I'm not talking about just the parks or just any other city property. So part of what I would be doing, and you'll see a couple of spots down there, developing non-parks property into sports tourism attractions, right? So any open land where we feel like there's a private entity that is interested in developing something from a sports standpoint that makes sense to the city, I would love to develop that and work with those, those groups. I've had very many preliminary conversations with, you know, businesses, CEOs, just corporate sponsorships that are interested in doing something like that. So a couple of examples of a director of sports development. Now, both of these, you'll see, they both pertain to the city, because this is all on city property. Now, again, what I'm doing would not be just on city property. It's kind of twofold, where I'm working for the city on separate, separate, and for separate businesses on private property to develop their own thing, but also that's going to benefit the city. So Frisco, Texas, sports and tourism staff, they're directly employed by the city. They manage sports facilities, recruit tournaments, and create sports partnerships. So exactly what I hit on, they're trying to develop the partnerships, right? They're trying to develop the partnerships that are going to grow the city, and they might want to have, you know, Nashville Predators, for example, and Nashville Predators in Gallatin. You know, we were very close to that with the Goat Farm, and there is still interest from the Preds to come to this area. So it's just something like that hitting that, hitting that mark. Cary, North Carolina, a little bit closer. Staffs devoted specifically to sports events recruitment and facility management. City-led, because Cary owns and operates facilities like the USA Baseball Complex. So again, this is all city property, so they're employed directly by the city. Now, this, this is a very, it's a very good slide, because it hits the head when it comes to sports tourism. So youth amateur professional sports are driving tourism growth nationwide. So tourism, sports tourism, is leading the way. U.S. sports tourism industry generated $100 billion in 2023. That's unbelievable, $100 billion. It's growing at 7% to 10% annual rate, and it's not showing any signs of slowing down, and nearby cities are already capitalizing. Gallatin has an opportunity, right? We have an opportunity to surpass Hendersonville, because we can do more than what they can, because there is more space here than what they have. Now, here's where we're going to go through some examples. So this one, I'm going to talk about a couple of examples here. So Albertville, Alabama, Sand Mountain Park and Amphitheater. Population, 23,000 people. Hour and a half to Birmingham, 100 large-scale sports events. Now, that's a mixture of half with sporting events and half with concerts, but 100 events. And you'll see, when we go through all these examples, they talk about events. That's what they use. So their, their drive is to create events, and those events are going to bring the people in. So Albertville has, Albertville has generated more than $20 million each year for the economic impact since 2021, and that's a city of 23,000 people. To me, that's mind-blowing. So go south, Foley, Alabama, I don't have this on the slide, but Foley, Alabama, they have 150,000 visitors a year, and they do 80 to 100 events, and that brings in 80, 80 to 100 million in the direct economic impact for the city. Now, for Foley, Alabama, soccer is the main one. So through spring and fall, there is, there are two tournaments, and 1,000 teams come in just for those two tournaments. That equates to 110,000 room rentals in hotels, 110,000. Elizabeth Town, Kentucky, a little bit closer. Elizabeth Town Sports Park, 34,000 people, 45 minutes to Louisville, 150 acres. Here at Triple Creeks, 180 acres and growing, so very similar to what we have. They run 40 to 50 large-scale sports tourism events. So in 10 years, $150 million in the direct economic impact. Now, this is, this is a, a big drain. This is a huge, huge operation. Westfield, Indiana, never heard of it until, and I'm from Indiana. Grand Park Sports Complex, there's 63,000 people in the city, 35 minutes to Indianapolis, 400 acres. 400 acres there, 2.5 million people per year travel to Westfield, Indiana. 2.5 million just for the events that they have, 200 to 300 events. $1.5 billion in economic development. Here's a little video on Westfield, Westfield, Indiana's Grand Park.
Coming at you.
All right, let's go. That better not make it.
If it was going to fly, we had to be on board. It was a no-brainer.
We have kids just learning how to play the sport out here, and then we have the top-of-the-top professionals. It just seemed far-fetched.
I thought that'll never happen.
I was very vocal. I guessed it.
Nothing needs to change, you know? Change is bad. Westfield's not the same Westfield it was when I was growing up.
It's difficult to rally enough people behind something that seems preposterous. And it seemed preposterous.
This is projected so far to have annual visitors of over 250,000 people a year.
That was way off. Last year, that number was 3.5 million.
Thanks. So that's just one facility, right? 3.5 million visitors a year. They didn't expect that, but they built it, and it obviously worked out great for them, and it still is. Ocoee, Florida, this is the dynasty. They haven't started it yet, but it's supposed to be the biggest tourist attraction in sports that there is. 159 acres, and it's cost, it's going to cost $1 billion. So what the numbers show, everything that we have right here, Triple Creek, so in comparison, 19,400 visitors. So what Triple Creek brings in, Sand Mountain Park, the first example, 91,000. That's about 100 events. Elizabeth Town Sports Park, pretty close, 91,000 again, roughly 40 to 50 events. And Grand Park, 485,000 visitors, 200 to 300 events. So what we have is, we have the drive, we have the need to develop this area, right? But I want to develop it in a different way with sports. I want to change the way we live. I want to change what we have, and I want to create something that Gallatin is very, very proud of when it comes to sports, right? It's going to enhance community pride and the quality of life. A sense of pride to have something as nice as what Grand Park has or Sand Mountain, what they have, would be unbelievable. Opportunities for youth participation. I want to give kids opportunities, opportunities that I had to get me where I went. That's what I'm trying to give the youth that we have around here. Healthy lifestyles and supporting local businesses year-round. So again, what I'm trying to do is develop, to develop Gallatin as a whole, not just the city property that we have or the parks that we have. I'm trying to help the whole city. I'm trying to develop the whole city and let people see the whole picture. So the ROI, right, the return on your investment is just developing Gallatin into a sports destination. One event could easily cover what my salary would be, and a modest budget goes a long, long way. One major event, like I said, can cover the position. It can do a lot, one event. So 80 to 100 events, you're talking millions of dollars at Sand Mountain, right? Long-term growth creates sustainable revenue. Gallatin parks have good bones. There's plenty of private interest for Gallatin parks. There's plenty of private interest for private property. Gallatin has space and has opportunity, has a great location. Now it needs sports tourism leadership. So appointing me as the Director of Sports Development will allow me to unlock Gallatin's full potential. So appointing me as the Director of Sports Development will allow me to unlock Gallatin's full potential and create a destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazel Baker. Whoops, mic's not on.
Um, thank you, Mr. Hazel Baker. I would ask if anyone has any questions you'd like to ask him.
I've got a comment.
Questions first.
Pardon?
Let's see if there's questions first.
So I'm trying to fix this before I can make a comment out of this question.
I'll come back to your comment. I was trying to see if there's questions first. Okay, no questions. We'll go on to, any thoughts? Wait, Councilman Juwans has a question. Councilman Juwans?
So kind of your plan would be some private entity too, which would cost the taxpayer nothing, correct?
Absolutely. Yep. This is not going to create-
Probably looking for investors and that type of thing.
Yeah. So the idea is going at the corporations, the CEOs, you know, one conversation I have, so one big idea I have is a entertainment district, right? 100,000 square foot facility. And I've had a healthcare CEO already commit to 20,000 square feet to see patients out of in that facility. So one conversation leads to something big for the city right away. And that doesn't cost the taxpayers anything.
How would you promote this?
Conversations. Nope.
There you go.
Just like I'm coming in tonight to network myself or discuss-
I'd like to say a lot right now, but I'll save it for later.
Councilman Juwans?
Yeah, I have a question. It's actually more, more for Susan. You said developing out of the, the city property. So if we go to a private entity, is that considered a public-private partnership? And is that something we can do?
It would not, it could not be a public-private partnership. That's why I would just lean over to Mayor and I said, I'm going to need to work with some people and figure out how we can do, how, you know, if council is interested, how we do this legally.
Well, and some of the conversations that we've had in the past, because he's actually, Mr. Hazel Baker, the way I've even known him is he's helped us facilitate with some conversations with some individuals who, for example, they wanted to build a sports facility, but they wanted to build amenities to support that, hotel, restaurants, et cetera. And so the question then became, and you know, Mr. Brownson, some of this, well, could the sports facility go on city land? In theory, could they lease it? And that would depend what that land was bought with, if they could give them, you know, if we could give them a lease on that land. Say they built an indoor sports facility and then somewhere near there on privately owned land, they would build supporting amenities. I think there are so many opportunities. Some of them are strictly private. Some of them are, you know, for example, bringing certain tournaments to our area. It wouldn't necessarily, in, in, you know, it could use Ball States fields, it could use Gallatin's fields, it could involve our hotels. It'd kind of be like a coordinator. I'd say it's a higher level of what Southern County Tourism used to do with a focus strictly on sports. To kind of coordinate how these things can happen and maximizing it and going after the ones that can bring the most teams here and creating the infrastructure to support those larger travel teams. And I don't have kids, I don't know much about travel sports, but everybody I know that has kids is traveling here, there and yonder and spending, you know, thousands of dollars every weekend to go somewhere and play some game for a nine-year-old. Which I find a bit preposterous, to use their word, but, um, but, I mean, I know oftentimes, you know, people laugh at the concept of tourism and Gallatin. They don't realize that people traveling for travel sports is just that. It's tourism. Mr. Fennell?
I'm not, go ahead. I'm not cutting you.
Oh, you were amening me? Okay.
No, I'm just saying I want to go back.
No, I, I, I'm just trying, trying to lean into that.
I'm the one, I could say more of my wife, but I have for years talked about, I think we're undercutting ourselves as far as the opportunity that Gallatin has. I'm one of the guys that travels quite often. My wife is every single weekend. Now it's gotten to the point where I've got seven grandkids and four of them are pretty much competing and going in different directions. My, one of my grandsons is in Murfreesboro all this weekend on a tournament. So the place in Indiana, I have been there. I have been to the Texas ones, the Atlanta ones, the Murfreesboro, the Franklin's, the Floridas. And I see so many people there just for like one event, either it be basketball or baseball or cheerleading. And I, I'm just, being in business for so long, I see a lot of money moving. And I know there's an opportunity for us here in Gallatin. And I would really love to see some type of sports facility come in here. Or it could change a lot. If I was a restaurant owner or something that pertained to people coming into town, spending their money, I mean, I would really be pushing for this if I was a small business owner. It's not automotive, but, uh, you know, other businesses around, I would really champion this type of discussion that we're having. I, I think that the way that you take, uh, I've been around Jeremy quite a few years and, and, and Gallatin, we are privileged that we have several retired pro athletes in this area. And the networking that, that, that they know, they built a relationship with other players across the country. And when these players get through playing, they're going to get into something else to try to do some more revenue or help out the community. And I see a bunch of these guys out there doing sports facilities and training. And, and bringing that to Gallatin would be something just wonderful. But, you know, if, if, if me being an automotive field for so long, I know a lot of people throughout the country and a lot of these TV shows, the personalities and stuff, and I've got connections in that industry. And, and I'm sure other people, Pascal Pilot, I'm sure he's got connections with pilots all over the United States. But when we got an opportunity with some of these pro athletes, I mean, you have seen it, you have been there, you have done it and you know the connections. And I think it would be, it would be an asset for us to try something like this and try to, uh, broaden our horizons. Uh, great presentation. And I'm glad finally some numbers have come up in front of me that show some of these facilities and actually what they are, are turning in. And that, it doesn't shock me nor does it surprise me at all. Thank you, Jeremy.
I think that there's a lot more data from a lot of different facilities because you've even, we've sat in several conversations because I think, I think a lot of people in Gallatin would be really fascinated by some of the inquiries that we've had and some of the paths we've gone down. And I think, you know, some of it, there's just, you know, we're a bit unknown, we're a bit off the beaten path. Nothing's really all fit together perfectly to make it work. We got close on the Preds thing. We thought we had that going. But then some changes happened in government that made it not really doable. But I think, you know, what I'm, what I'm never going to say I want us to do is for the taxpayers to invest in a very, very expensive public facility. I want private investors and if they can use an ITD or even a TIF or something to make it work, then I think that can make sense. And that's how we pursued it with the Preds. Councilman Pan?
Well, you kind of touched on what I was going to say. By doing it with private investors, the city gains a ton and they don't have the responsibility of putting these tournaments together or the maintenance of the fields. Those guys aren't making money. It's their own fault. And it costs the city nothing except maybe doing a different zoning. It might even go into the end of the county or on the edge, whatever. But whatever, wherever that place goes, if it's a nice facility, people are going to follow.
Yeah, but, but in many scenarios, our own facilities could be part of an offering to an outside audience.
Well, it could be overflow. I mean, let's just say he starts with 10 fields, four soccer fields, six baseball fields or whatever. A large tournament's going to require us to help them do it. And it's just, it saves the city money and brings the money in, our motels, hotels, restaurants, the whole nine yards.
We want people to come here, spend money and leave. Councilman Alexander?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I love the idea and I agree with Councilman Fennell in, in, let's try this. From the moment I, I heard the idea, I thought this, this is a great idea. And, uh, you know, when, when we make decisions at our church is, you know, is it the right idea, the right time and the right people to drive it? And I think definitely it's the right idea and the right time. And, and having gotten to know Jeremy, I think he's the, the right guy in the driver's seat, so.
I think we need to-
100% behind this.
I think we need to be consistent in how we do things within the city. And so I think we need to be really clear if this is something that you all are interested in, that we develop a job description, that we figure out where the position lives, that we, you know, figure out what kind of salary, how that salary is being funded. And then I think we have to go through a process too. Councilman Juwans?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, we, we met and you, you know where I stand. I think you're, you're a fantastic guy. I think it's a, it's an idea worth exploring, but I'd like to have more, you know, more info from legal to make sure we, we start something we can actually do legally. And like, like you were saying, I think that's probably going to have to go for the next budget cycle.
Oh, well, we, I, I, I'm guessing the thought is this, that tourism dollars could help fund this position. But there are a lot of unknowns and I do feel very strongly that we have to go through a proper process because, if you stick around here a few minutes, you'll see that we would then have a line of people proposing job positions with the city of Gallatin. And, and at the same time, I have a whole table of department heads going, hey, wait, what about our department and what we need in our department, blah, 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 blah. So I think that there needs to be some consideration, some contemplation, some thought. And, and I think, you know, depending on what this council says, I mean, certainly willing to help develop a, a proposal, if you will, but-
So what do you think the next step is?
A proposal? Yeah, I think that's kind of what makes sense. That would come from, I'd say, HR, potentially EDA or tourism. It's been put from you, Mr. Hazel Baker, and, huh?
I need to be involved because I've not been brought in on this at all.
Well, nor have any, well, I don't know, some people may have been, but yeah.
Well, what, what timeframe you think you guys are thinking on, on bringing, bringing it back to us for?
I'd say let us put it, well, this, the end of the year gets kind of crazy, you know? We'll put it on a work session, probably, I don't know. Maybe not the next one. We've got an off week, so as soon as we can. Does that work?
I would just like to say I'd like to offer my support to that too, especially considering we do need more for the youth to do here. And two, considering like these youth that we're looking at developing sports facilities and different things for, to keep them out of the streets and out of trouble are the same youth that when we're older, or I'm older rather, I mean, they'll be the people that will be serving and leading our city.
Tom McCollough, first, October 28th. One thing I want to say in the presence of department heads, there were many positions that were not funded in this budget year. Now, obviously this is funding that can come from a different source, but I just want to remind you, there were many positions that were not funded in this budget year.
My position with this is, uh, with Jeremy is really trying for him to go out there and give it some time and trying to land a private entity to come in here and run a facility as such. I mean, that, that, that's really the conversations I've had with Mr. Hazelback on, on my idea is I think it takes somebody of his caliper that knows these people in the sports field to be able to go out and try to land somebody like that. But that's what I'm, that's what I'm wanting Jeremy really to focus on is, is that.
To, to touch on that point real fast, my, my master plan is to do just that. It's to basically develop an entertainment district. Where we have a sports facility, we have an amphitheater, we have everything in one location in close proximity to the parks that we already have. So this is exactly what I want to do. And that's all being focused around private entities and private property.
And then I have another question as well, or a question. So with this as well, we're looking at adding this position, are we still going to do like we would do for any other position? And open the slate up for anybody to apply and then have, like bring in a hiring committee, a professional committee to review things?
I'd say it depends on whether it lives under the EDA umbrella, if it lives within the city, but yes, we need to follow a consistent process with either.
One, one other thought that I had that, that I, I didn't say, and I might have mentioned it. I, I'm not saying like, it might work itself into a full-time position here, but what I'm saying do is, is what I'd like to see done is maybe say, hey, Jeremy, we'll give you one year right here. Let's see what you can produce in one year. So that we're not tied to, uh, I don't know how that, legality stuff, I'm sure, but that's my, my-
I think any new position is a potential pilot. I mean, you'll recall Communications Director, Tourism Parks Marketing, lots of things we have tried and some have worked and some have not. And I think the option could exist to do it in a consultant capacity, depending on how full-time it is, or it could be full-time, you know, with a trial period of a year to-
I understand that, yes.
I like Mr. Hazel Baker, but I, I still think that, um, just for the sake of not giving the precedence that we're doing something for one person-
I know a lot of people out the door.
That we, you know, we do need to open that process up. And if we find that he is the best candidate, I, I think he would be wonderful. And I, just getting to know him and talking to him and meeting with him, I mean, I think he'll be wonderful for the job.
Well, October 28th is the-
Do you need a motion to bring it back?
I don't think so because it was a discussion.
I think we would just like some, maybe a consensus of hands or something that says-
Is everybody cool with putting it on the agenda for October 28th with a potential proposal? Very good. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I want to add one thing too. Um, this is also a workforce pipeline. And I'm not talking about athletes becoming professionals. Yes, if you're a good athlete, it can get you a college scholarship, partial or full. Yes, you might make it into the pros, but we have four professional sports entities. The Predators alone, aside from the team, have 300 people in their office just for the Predators. And what they do with Bridgestone Arena, that's 300 jobs running a sports venue and an entertainment venue. So also factor in that it is a job generator and a specific skill set. Just like you're doing medical or accounting or mechanics or engineering, it is a job workforce pipeline as well. For a very growing, phenomenally growing industry because of the sports that they're bringing into schools. Again, that I never thought were like real sports, but now they are and you can be a professional in some things that I, I, I can't imagine axe throwing, but you can be an axe-throwing professional in a tournament if you want to, so.
Yeah, I'm not going to like rah 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 for that.
No, but still-
But I think people would be amazed to know that there are minor league and independent league teams that are looking in this area and are being very successful with not just their teams, but events surrounding those teams in areas just like Gallatin. So that is our, our posture at this time, so.
Let me add one more thing. The crowd that don't know, Rosemary's brother was like a legend for the Dallas Cowboys. Yeah, so I grew up watching him and had no idea, you know, that I would be kind of connected to him a little bit. But maybe one day we can bring, you can bring him along down here.
Maybe. I will also add that when my child, my oldest son, who's in his 40s, was 15 and doing travel baseball, one aluminum bat alone cost 300 to 500 dollars. And sometimes if it broke or cracked, we had to run out to that city. We had to do, wash the uniforms, maybe get new shoes, get a new bat, new glove and all these other things. Plus we're going to restaurants and hotels and bringing lots of people in. And then we leave and we don't live here and you don't have to keep us, so.
Sorry, but 300 bucks, it, it just all tipping on a trailer for equestrian sort of, you know, that's-
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jenna.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks, Rosemary.
All right, the next item we're going to be looking at, folks, is ordinance 2509-47. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, approving and amending- This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Sumner County, Tennessee, approving an amended preliminary master development plan for 1520 Hunt Club Boulevard on one plus or minus acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and west of Hunt Club Boulevard, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. And to introduce this, we have Mr. Brian Rose, the city planner.
Thank you. So this is the Hunt Club Retail Project. We did present this a couple weeks ago, and the applicant was not present, and so it was deferred by the council so that the applicant could be here. But this request is to approve an amended preliminary master development plan at 1520 Hunt Club Boulevard on a one-acre lot located right there in the yellow area. And Hunt Club Boulevard is here, and 31E is right there. Property is zoned MU, mixed use, and the proposed use of the property is 14 live-work units. Previously, this property has received approval for an office complex, and so this would be a change of the approved use that was, it was back on May 23rd, 2022. The area was intended for office retail development as part of the original PMDP. So this would again be a change, as this is heavily appearing as more of a residential project. Here's the layout. The, again, Hunt Club Boulevard is right here, and then there's a little side street with some offices to the south. To the north, there's some, a little bit of a space of vacant land with a recently approved retail complex up against 31E. So that will be coming soon. Plan Gallatin designates this area as general urban, community character area, which has a recommended density of five to 15 dwelling units per acre. The MU zoning also allows 15 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density on the property is 14 units per acre, which is basically, it's because it's one acre and 14 units that evens it out. So while this is a deviation from the approved master plan, it doesn't conflict with the goals and intent of the comprehensive plan, the character area plan. Some of the details, the buffer yards would be provided at type 10 and type 12 slash type 20. Parking would be accommodated by two-car garages and also 10 additional parking spaces in the rear, which are located here. So each of the units would have a two-car garage along this access aisle in the back, in the middle, and then you have the 10 additional parking spaces right there. Conceptual elevations have been provided right here. I've also attached copies of the previous approvals in your packet for your reference. Planning Commission voted that this is a major amendment to the PMDP. Normally, it would not come to you unless it were voted as a major amendment, and so it's before you for consideration. They did vote by a vote of seven to zero to recommend that this be a major amendment. The applicant, I believe, is here today. We were told that Dustin Scruggs is representing the applicant, so I believe they would like to make a presentation. Good evening. I don't have a presentation, so to speak, but I am happy to answer any questions you guys may have about this potential development there in Gallatin. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Characterize these as apartments?
Definitely not apartments. They have look, I mean, looking at the elevation, it'd be more of like a townhome look. One of the issues about people who work from home like ourselves, my company is also like a work-from-home, is we're not allowed to have clients come to our office or our house or even employees. And so this would be kind of like one of those hybrid where you get that at-home feeling, but it does allow you a little bit more flexibility for clients and having, you know, a couple employees come.
But they are rentable.
Sir?
They are for rent.
But I think some, as far as the ownership structure, is definitely up for discussion. The client's just an investor who has done a lot of development in the metro Nashville area, greater area here, and so he's got several different business models. I know we've been working with staff quite a bit, trying to find something that fits in here, you know, so we are pretty flexible on what we can offer. But this is kind of where the client and the city has kind of come together, and this is what we've got so far with this one little acre parcel there.
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question, looking at your renderings. The city planner said you would have front-loaded two-car garage. When I see that, I don't see front-loaded two-car garage. Yeah, two-car garage.
The garages will be loaded from this main driveway that's in between the space. So you have your street is basically here, and then you'll have the fronts of the homes facing some open space in, on the other side, and the rear of the homes will actually be where the garages will be. So, yeah, they're not front-loaded, which, that's how these also show in the-
Which one was Gallatin Road?
Gallatin Road is actually off the screen on this. I can back up a couple screens so you can see where that's at. So-
Oh, I remember, I see.
It's out here, and then that main little spine will be in between here, and your units would face towards the open space here and towards the street here.
Can you go back to the renderings, please? Yeah, I don't see it, but how big is it gonna be the, how much you plan on doing a two-car garage? You plan to do a average, a bigger car, smaller car? Because if you take average, it's 20 by 20. And I think you, what you're showing us, the plan, the floor plan of your townhouse is 24 by 42. So that doesn't leave a lot of room.
So two-car garage is typically 16 feet wide.
16 feet wide?
Yeah. So you can fit that with still eight feet left over, and that includes, you have to have a little bit on the other side, but you'd have probably six feet on one side and two feet on the other side.
So where I really have a problem with that is that if I look at everything, they basically open themselves to do whatever they want with that property. So propose use residential, office flex space, or mixed use. And mixed use, you know, when the office flex or mixed use, they show us that with one room, one room in the house to be an office. So we have no way to regulate that because I'm thinking of, you know, like you were saying, you want to bring clients in. I suppose if you're commercial, and maybe you can confirm that to me, if you're commercial, you need EDA access. Yeah, no?
I don't think these are gonna be commercial buildings. I think these are residential buildings. Is that accurate?
It's a residential building with the ideal that some amount of office space would be available within the residence to be able to use.
I think we're opening ourselves to-
That's more of a flex space, correct? It's not a designated, or is it? Is it a designated commercial space inside the residence?
No.
Not necessarily, and I don't know that the city would be able to regulate that.
Exactly.
So that's gonna be residential, and we have no way to regulate what they, and I think we just starting a precedent where now every office space was approved, and an office space is gonna come and build more townhouses. I can't vote for that. Office space, we need office space. And if I remember the conversation with Marina, we have the, how do you call that, Sumner County Development, whatever, who said that the Marina was gonna bring plenty of high-level companies, and they're gonna need office space. So I just think we're opening ourselves, it's, it's not, it's not gonna be, you know, commercial or flex, flex office, how we define that, because I have an office in my home, it's not a flex space, it's a residential home. And if I have a gym, I call that, you know, a gym. If I have a room with a gym, I'm gonna call that a gym. No, it's residential. I think, again, we're opening ourselves to a precedent, and that was approved for office space, we need office space. I can't, I can't vote yes on that. I think that should stay office.
And we did kind of give feedback to the developer that, you know, this is predominantly an office complex area, and that this would be a deviation from that. And that's, again, why this is in front of you for a decision.
Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. When I talked to the property owner, he conveyed to me that his hope was that there would be accountants that worked basically in the first floor and lived above, insurance agents where they could have, you don't need a ton of space. My takeaway from that conversation was it was gonna be primarily used for business and residential on top. And I'm listening to what he's telling me, and I'm seeing 10 parking spaces for 14 units. And Mr. Rose, does that make your radar jump a little bit, or are you okay with that?
It doesn't give a lot of flexibility for clients to be able to come and visit. Wouldn't expect with there being a small office at the bottom of a residence that there would be a lot of, but, I mean, you'd be limiting yourself to basically less than one client per unit because you only have the 10 outside spaces. And those outside spaces may be used by the residents because they filled up their garage with things that, you know, take spaces away from their cars, so.
Is the parking based on square footage?
It's based on a per unit. So technically, all they need is the two spaces within the garage to comply, because it's a two units per, or two parking spaces per unit. But we also generally count on there being some driveway space, which they don't have in this case because it's a common area, and so they have to rely on the regular parking spaces as well for any overflow outside the garage.
Am I understanding this right? There is an exception on parking?
As far as the number of parking spaces?
We're talking about a business, or are we talking residential?
It is residential with flex space. I would suspect that some people may use the flex space for business, but I do not think that it's going to be. It's not your, to me, it's not your traditional business below, residence above, or some, it's not, it's not a business front. It is a residential home built to and within a business community to be able to provide a little bit more accommodation for people who work at home.
For a lot of business activity, but the flexibility is there to be able to do it.
How many units total is it?
My problem with it would be now, if you got an accountant in that office, chances are he's got one or two employees if he's got any business at all. Where are you gonna put them?
Again, I don't know that it's meant to have employees coming to an office necessarily. That would exacerbate the problem with the parking, for sure.
Wouldn't work for everybody, but it might work for somebody.
Yeah, I mean, if I manage this from personal experience, as a small engineering firm, I'd probably get one client every month or two that comes to our office, you know, so that's, that's about it. And, you know, and we have one employee that comes in from Cookeville maybe once every two weeks, so.
Got signage at your office?
We do not. Actually, rent a, rent a small office space in a apartment complex. So they have, so they have all the residential units, and then they have commercial units at the bottom, because they took out half the gym and put in more commercial units. So that's what I rent right now.
Again, I'm trying to put my head around the small business side, because if the parking is on the roadside and the entry is on the field side, you're gonna operate business with an entry. I can't, I can't figure it out. I think, I just think it-
Yeah, we've, we've worked on a couple of these concepts before in metro, and they've worked out pretty, pretty nicely, but, you know, that's, you come in, I know one of the Gallatins' main concerns here is that there's no garages visible from the street, and so that's, that's why we're trying to do the alley-loaded, bring everybody in, give them some options to go left or right, and then be able to park in the garage. Obviously, they have that, that kind of access to those units. We also put the eight up front on the street, so that kind of shields the garages, and then the six in the back, and that way we can really make it very difficult to have seen any of the garage space.
Let me ask you something. The units that face the grass, are you gonna have sidewalks going up in front of that?
Yes, sir, yeah, that's, that's a little deviation from what I had originally designed. Some feedback from the city, and so, yeah, we'll incorporate their sidewalk along the back as part of the conditions approval, I believe, from Planning Commission.
As, as you think it is just bringing more, more townhouses on a commercial area, we need office space, I'm pretty sure. Ms. Bates, I can hear screaming right now, saying, give me office, give me offices. So I disagree with that. I'm making a motion to deny.
At this point, it's a work, a council committee meeting, so would the motion be to not move it forward?
It's a motion to move it forward or not.
Excuse me, Paige, what'd you say?
I said it's a motion to move forward to council or not.
Motion to not moving forward.
Brian, is it, oh, when you buy into, like you buy into a house, you're gonna own the, you'll own the townhouse, or is it a, like far as tax-wise? I mean, I run a business, they taxed me for, I mean, this might not even be in, I might not even be saying it right, but they taxed me for business at my house, plus they taxed me for, so that's the way that would be, I mean, if you own it?
Yeah, I would venture to say it's gonna be a mostly residential tax. I don't know the ins and outs of how things are taxed. That would maybe be an appraiser to-
If I'm running a business downstairs and I'm looking upstairs, that would be, you know what I'm saying, that's two.
Now, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be property taxes on commercial. If it were all owned by one owner and rented out individually, then it would be commercially taxed. That's how that would work. Right now, we have a motion to not move forward. I have no second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion not to move it forward and a second, so all in favor of not moving it forward, please say aye.
Discussion before, open for discussion?
Oh, sorry, discussion.
I would like to hear what Ms. Bates thinks about it, because it's office space, it's her, if you want to, you don't have to, but-
Thanks, I'll leave that up to you.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think you might have been reading my mind a little bit, shocking that we might agree, don't you think?
I know.
I know, yeah.
Pretty scary, I do.
I, I agree, it's pretty scary, yeah. This reminds me of when I was on the Planning Commission and people, I'm not speaking about this gentleman, I'm sure he's very reputable, but it reminds me when we would get someone in who wanted to do this fabulous mixed-use development, including retail, commercial and residential. And then before you knew it, oh, we can't find any commercial and nobody wants to have an office, so can we just make it all residential? And we would look them. And we have had to learn from our mistakes. When I hear that it's going to be up to the people living in it and they don't know whether you're going to buy the townhouse or rent the townhouse, my fear is if you let these few units go on the property, then the next thing you're going to hear, and it may not come to fruition, is, oh, guess what, now we want the rest of it to be like this. And you've already opened the door for that. Some of you may not have experienced the, and this even precedes Mayor Brown and in some cases, her predecessor, where the council and the Planning Commission would not hold fast on the commercial and the retail. We have a situation already in Gallatin where a person bought a chunk of property, wanted to do residential in the back and commercial in the front, they come to me and we had a deal with them that they couldn't open the residential until they built part of the commercial. They claim they can't find any commercial, yet the property across the street from them is filled with commercial and retail and has been successful. I think there might have been one business in that property that changed type. It was a restaurant, but it changed from one type of restaurant to another. My concern is not so much the idea of working from home and having an office in your home, you can actually get tax write-offs for having an office in your home if you own the home. But my concern is opening the door to allow this type of request to open the door to, let's just fill that whole lot up with a residential. You have other properties that are not master development plans and MU and, so that is my caution to you. I think that if some patience and some actual, and some really good door knocking and prospecting, I think that you can put a type of office complex in there that maybe has some minor medical services and some other situations like that, and it would be successful. But I'm not them, I don't know their financial situation, I just, I, I would not, I would encourage you to think very long and hard if you decided to change this and not open that door for them to come back and say, that worked so great, let's do all residential. It does concern me that they don't know whether they're going to sell them or rent them too.
I, I have to say, I really like when you talk like me, let's just sound an accent, but.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Further discussion, anyone? Okay, all in favor of not moving it forward, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Not move forward. I am going to ask that we move up, let me find it here, number 11. Let's move 11 up without objection to the next item on the agenda. I think that's the only thing that we have people here for. And I need, I think we all need to take a recess. Uh-oh. Next waving.
Mine, number six.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and if, if, okay, if y'all don't mind, then let's go ahead and do number six and then number 11. Is that?
I want to go five minutes.
I think we probably need to do a 10-minute recess and I just wanted to kind of go ahead and knock these out if we could, just so they could go ahead and leave and not wait for a recess. Okay, Mr. Tull, I want to ask you to come on forward.
I'm sure you all recall back in May of 2024, council passed an ordinance to rezone the banks at Lock Four. With that, council required several improvements that were to be made off-site and the city would actually be partnering with the development on making those improvements. The way that we're partnering with the developer, it's not financial, but it is in leading part of the project to help acquire necessary easements and right-of-way. So we would act as that agent, but we would not be funding anything. So what you have before you tonight is a development agreement that describes that Just as a reminder, and I can show you the images where the improvements were to be made, if you would like a reminder on that, but if you don't need to see that and you recall what it is or have read the, the development agreement as it was explained, then I won't go into that and use any more of your time tonight, because I know it's. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer and I do believe, well, we do have a gentleman here with, I don't know if he works with D.R. Horton? Four Star, sorry. Four Star, which is part of the developers group. So he's here to answer any questions if you guys have any. Yes, well, I'll turn, turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Councilman Javon, any questions?
One thing I don't like, that for now, there are too many unknown on what's going to be done, because it's going to be a roundabout or lights, a roundabout or stops, lights or turn lane. I don't like when there are, there are too many, because if we can do the roundabout, why do we need to go and start, you know, eminent domain on land to pick up the land to be able to do the roundabout? So that's my first thing. And the second one is, it's based on the TIS recommendation, and that's what the contracts say, but on the, the TIS, actually, the contracts say TIS, approved by, the recommendation approved by council, if I remember well, that says that. And I remember making an amendment to have the entry side, the block four, on the requirement to be done before, and I don't see that here. So my question is that, as I was part of the requirement, should that be there in a contract?
Not what the contract is, that agreement does stand, this is.
That improvement is pretty, they're, they're building that improvement, they've already got approval for the plans to build that, they understand that we're not necessary for that piece of it. So they have all the, the right-of-way that's necessary to construct that, so we didn't feel it was necessary to include it in this agreement.
So should the language be changed to remove that piece of, because that piece was voted as a requirement?
Part of the approval, though.
That's part of the, yes, that's, that's part of the approval, so that will stand. The city's protected by that. If that, I, I think that's your question. Can you show me in the agreement what you're referring to?
Thinking about it, I'm trying to. I, I will go back again and see if I, send it to you if. But again, I think there was too many unknown, I would like to know what they're going to do before we start working on taking people land if needed. That's my, that's my only comment.
Can I, if you don't mind, Mr. Alexander? So I, I believe the unknowns that you're talking about are the, the two different options where we have, one is a traffic signal or signalized intersection at Hancock in Lock Four or a roundabout, and then the other is the intersection of Lock Four and Nichols Lane, where it would be an always stop or a roundabout. I am, so i- in the agreement, we have said that the city prefers the roundabout-style intersection for both of those intersections. I, I'm, I think we could probably make some small adjustment in here that says that we would show back up to you if it's not that. Right now, we're moving forward with the, the number one priority for us and working with them has been the Hancock Street and Lock Four intersection and a roundabout, and that's all we've talked about at this point. So we're moving forward with roundabout plans and as, as we have developed it, we have not run into anything that has said this is not an impossible task or it's, it's something that we can move forward with, so.
I, I would like to do that, change, change the language if possible, if everybody's okay with that, and bring it, you know, bring it back next week, which, not next week.
Small change that we could get.
Not the week after.
Gone.
Yeah.
Prior to it being ready.
One, two, three weeks, I think.
I would, I don't know if our, our representative would like to speak to that tonight, but I would remind you that he is here and can, can respond if he'd like, but.
I'll let you hash it up with him.
Sure.
And get back to Susan, and if you think it's, it's something we can do, just bring it back to us amended and with the language you want, and I'm all good with it. Motion to move to council.
Motion by Councilman Javon, second by Councilman Carter. Any further discussion, any questions? I'm so sorry, I knew you did and I forgot.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at two of the three proposals here for this, looks like we're taking some land belonging to churches. Has there been discussion already with them?
No.
So this is really proposed.
The process for right-of-way acquisition, the, typically, the city will not make the direct contact, we will have an agent that we hire that, that runs as a mediator, and so that's who would, would speak with them. At this point, we have not hired anybody because, you know, we haven't gone through, we haven't gone through this agreement to say that the city's going to act it on behalf of the developer to acquire right-of-way, so we have not contacted anyone there.
Announce questions, discussion. Okay, this is Resolution R2509-61, all in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Move forward unanimously. We'll move now to item number 11, which is Resolution R2509-62, it's a resolution awarding health, vision and dental insurance contract for the City of Gallatin. Miss Ken Jimmy is recognized.
Counsel, so I will try to be as quick as possible, we do have Michael and Kelly, who are insurance agents here, in case there are questions that I don't cover. I do have a lot of information and it's a lot of numbers, so I'll try to be quick. The City of Gallatin has received our health, dental and vision renewals for January 1, 26th. Just a quick reminder that in January of 2025, we had a 5% increase in our, in our benefits. Prior to that, we were given a rate hold and had the same rate for 27 straight months. So our medical claims year-over-year are up 12.2% versus the prior 12-month study, and they went from about 4.48 million to 5.02, no, 5.03 million. Medical trend, which is the rising cost of healthcare overall, is currently 13.5% kind of nationwide. We have nine people with claims over $100,000 and all of those are still active conditions that are generating claims. Those claims have accumulated 1.31-plus in costs. We have five people with claims between $75,000 and $100,000, those members are still active and have generated claims of 387,734. Our members had 313 emergency room visits in that 12-month period and 84% of our drugs, drug claims are, yeah, not drugs, no, yep, 84% of our drug claims are generic drugs, which is some really good news. So preferred brand drug usage is 12.5%, non-preferred drug usage is only 1.8%, and specialty drugs, which can be extremely expensive, are used at only 1.6% of the time. Blue Cross Blue Shield's provider discounts provided a savings of 62.7%. So our initial medical renewal was 13.37%, and our insurance agents, Michael and Kelly, were able to negotiate that down to reduce our renewal to 11.37% for our medical. That is a savings of $102,000. So the annual increase to the City of Gallatin revised renewal is 581,000, that's over the 12-month period. So for the '25, '26 budget year, we'd be looking at $290,612.11, or 5.65%. There would be no change to the medical benefits as they're written. The employees would see an increase, so the increase to their biweekly deductions would range from $0 for the plan that we cover in full, but those who see an increase would see an increase between $0.89 per check and $42.80 per check, dependent upon their plan and coverage. 59% of our employees, though, would not see an increase, they are on that 0% plan. And so a total of 69.3% of our employees would see less than a $5 increase per check for this year. We did look at changing and increasing office visit co-pays, prescription drug co-pays and emergency room co-pays, and the savings were only about 1.25% for the renewal, so we were still going to see an increase anyway. We did not feel that there was enough savings to cost our employees and their families more money for benefits that they use on a regular basis. Switching over real quick to dental, dental claims have increased, which affect our rates. Members are utilizing benefits that can assist in early prevention of other medical conditions. Our original dental renewal was 12.95%, and again, our insurance agents were able to negotiate that down, revised dental renewal is now at 9.95%, so under 10% for dental. The impact to the City of Gallatin is $10,500 essentially, or $875 monthly, with no change to our dental benefits. Employees would see an increase ranging from $0 to, those who see an increase, though, would see from $0.45 to $5.29. And 50% of our employees would not see any increase in their biweekly deduction and 67.7% of our employees would, would see an increase of less than $1 per check. So the vision renewal is at a hold, 0% across there, so the recommendation is to stay at Blue Cross Blue Shield for all lines of coverage with our current plan makeup, and the rate adjustments are within what was budgeted, so it was built into the budget when we built it. So far, we, our employees are pleased, for the most part, with their coverage and the closest that we can get to not having changes was what we kind of went for.
Motion to move to council.
Motion by Councilman Javon, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, sir, I appreciate the work you're doing for us, or ma'am. Just one thing, if we bring the, the same agenda, there is a typo on the summary, it's a decrease.
Oh, sorry.
Just.
Yes.
Just a fix.
I'll, I'll fix that.
Easy fix. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Will do. Any questions, though?
I think the one thing you didn't mention is we've been pretty good with keeping the increases pretty low. We always hate it when we have a big one, but it seems like every so many years we do.
Two years, over two years at zero.
And then we, you know, I was surprised that even looking at increasing the cost of drugs and visits, it didn't reduce us that much.
It really didn't.
And I feel like that does feel like a real impact, especially for those employees who are routinely going to the things where they pay a co-pay. So anyway, don't like an increase, but I think for the sort of four, keeping with the same provider and no change to plan, I think it's the best that we can do by our employees this go-round, so appreciate y'all. Okay, all in favor of moving forward, Resolution R2509-62 to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, let's take a 10-minute recess or a 12-minute recess, we will reconvene at 8:20.
Courtney brought some brownies.
Courtney brought some brownies.
I have some too. I have a big bowl, if you'd like some.
It's eight twenty. We're going to reconvene this meeting and we'll resume with item number four, ordnance O two five oh nine dash fifty, ordnance appropriating $5,000 from CSX Transportation Military and First Responder Grant. Chief Vandy.
Yes, thank you, Council Mayor. This is the ordinance appropriating the funds that we received from this grant to use for equipment. Motion to move to council?
Second.
Motion, Mayor Buddy, second, Mayor Buddy, Ms. Ketchel Pickett. It's ordnance O two five oh nine dash fifty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. What a lovely change this evening.
Thank you.
Item five, resolution R two five oh nine dash fifty-eight. It's a resolution to approve official Public Works mission, vision, and value statement. Mr. De Priest, Public Works Superintendent, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. So if you remember back several months ago, I brought to you all that we were going to be applying to become accredited through the American Public Works Association. And one of the steps of that is to have the legislative body adopt this mission, vision, and value statement. And it's in the, it's in your packet. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Motion to move to council?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Juveant, second by Councilman Fennell. Any questions? Any discussion? It's resolution R two five oh nine dash fifty-eight. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does move forward with unanimous support. Item number seven is ordnance O two five oh nine dash fifty-one, ordnance appropriating funds for carryover projects from the prior fiscal year. Ms. Nichols, Finance Director.
Every year, we have a list of projects that have not been completed by the end of the fiscal year, and we need you to reappropriate the balances of those for this current fiscal year that we're in now. We have a list of all these projects. It's very numerous, and they're in different stages of being completed. But departments would appreciate if you would appropriate those funds where they could finish off these projects.
Say again?
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions? Any discussion? Councilman Juveant?
Thank you, Mayor. It's just question for my own staff. You don't have to answer if you don't know. I'm okay with it. Do you know what percentage of that has been through several years on the carryover?
I don't know a percentage, but there are a couple that have just taken longer to be completed.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else? Okay, this is ordnance O two five oh nine dash fifty-one. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does move forward unanimously. Amendment is resolution R two five oh nine dash fifty-nine. It's an initial resolution authorizing issuance not to exceed 23 million general obligation bond. Ms. Nichols.
Anytime we issue a general obligation bond, the state of Tennessee Comptroller's Office requires us to pass an initial resolution, which is a notice to the public that the city will be issuing debt. And once this initial resolution is passed, there's a 28-day period that the public is given to protest the debt issue if they do not feel it's in the best interest of the city. So this resolution is for that purpose only.
This the fire station?
This includes fire station, fire truck, traffic signals, software for the IT department, developing the trout property that was purchased, tennis court renovations, outdoor pool concession stand, parks trash truck, and a secondary recovery IT site.
Once you got me started, I remembered it. Thank you.
Motion by Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Jones. Any further discussion? Any further questions? Okay, this is resolution R two five zero nine dash fifty-nine. Those in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does move forward with unanimous support. Item nine is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of general obligation bonds of the city of Gallatin in an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed 23 million and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of debt service on the bonds. Again, Ms. Nichols.
This is the actual bond resolution. It defines the projects that are going to be funded with this money, and it sets out all the parameters around borrowing the money. We're looking at a 20-year bond for this. The annual debt service payment for that will be approximately $1,625 for principal and interest total. If you'll remember, back in February, you approved a capital improvement plan for the city, and that's our 10-year projection. At the bottom of the general fund page, there was notation that we would be needing a bond issue approximately $29 million for a three-year period. At that time, we had the cost of just a fire station, not a fire station, administrative building, and training facility. So our cost actually went up a little from that. Then again, in May, as part of the budget ordinance, there was notation that we would be issuing debt for the projects at the list I just rattled off. So this is just the resolution to actually start that. Those projects total a little over 41 million when we looked at the 26, 27, 28 projects that were on the capital improvement plan. This part, we're going to use, or we're asking to fund with a general obligation bond. Next month, I'll be back with something very similar, but we'll be using a different tool to fund some other of our projects. So this will be step one.
Motion by Councilman Carter.
Second.
Second by Councilman Alexander. Opening the floor for discussion. Councilman Juveant.
Thank you, Mayor. So the Act eight, you say there is what, 29 days to get public comments on it? The one we just voted before?
After you approve it at a council meeting, we will have to run a notice in the local newspaper. And once that notice runs, then they'll have 20 days from that point in time to protest. If there are no protests, then after that 20-day period, we can actually issue this or move forward with issuing the bond.
And if they raise a protest, how does that work?
Then they come here, and you either decide that you still want to move this forward, or you think they have a valid argument for stopping all these projects.
Something you said earlier, and I remember you talking about that during a budget meeting, that initially, we're thinking of 30 million to cover the three years. Now, we're talking about that this year. That's, that's a lot of debt, but I don't like taking more debt on, but if that's necessary, we have to do it.
Revenue has significantly increased as well with the addition of the property, I mean, not the property tax, the sales tax. Looks like we even will have underestimated that impact. So anyone else with questions, discussion? Okay, this is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty. All in favor of moving forward, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Will move forward to council and has unanimous support. Item 10 is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-six, a resolution approving tips as a purchasing cooperative under the city's purchasing procedures.
Periodically, we will ask you to approve a purchasing cooperative that departments can purchase from in lieu of doing a formalized bid. We've had a department come and request that we include tips as one of the approved cooperatives, and the resolution is before you for that, please.
Question by Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Juveant.
Can you explain the tips?
The second, yours?
Yes, ma'am.
Opening the floor for discussion. You may ask.
Thank you, ma'am. What do you call tips exactly?
Tips is the name of the company.
Oh, okay.
We have different purchasing cooperatives. There's Byboard. There's the, there's one that's a North Carolina Sheriff's Association. There's one that's a Houston area, Galveston, Houston area, public safety organization. We have Omnia, which is nationwide. This is just another option for department heads.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Yes. This is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-six. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Thank you all very much.
Does move forward unanimously. Moving now to item number 12. It's resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-three. It's resolution amending the City of the Alton Personnel Rules and Regulations, Rule five, Section five, six, A. Courtney Ken Jimmy, HR Director.
Hi.
And she has three of these tonight.
I do. Yep, there's three more after this one. So, real quick, let me. So in reviewing the department head recruitment and selection policy with the Code's official opening that we have, we've recognized that some of the wording of the policy may no longer be in alignment with, say, federal laws and other orders. And so those areas were removed. Additionally, the policy prescribed specific entities for advertising such as the Tennessean. The wording was made more general to keep the intent of the policy without requiring a specific entity to advertise. There are no material changes to the process itself. It was just cleaning up some of the wording.
Motion to send to council?
Motion by Councilman Juveant, second by Councilman Carter. Questions, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the word you changed is that you changed on A five, the panel will recommend and forward for approval a list of candidate for interview.
No. So in, let's see. Which number was it?
A five. It's like, say your list of candidates.
We'll review the poll. Yeah, so what was removed from there? So that line is still there.
Okay.
The next line that was removed is that the director will review the poll for adequate representation of certain groups.
So I look at B one, and I think we should change that because if we talk about a list of candidates for interview, on B one, it's the expert panel will recommend a candidate for appointment to the city council. The city council then will consider for appointment the candidate recommended. I think that should be part of the list of candidate, not, because if I read that, because we had that case, what do we get a list of candidate for interview if we're going to apply that and say we're going to hire the candidate the panel recommend? There is no, well, you know.
So this particular resolution isn't addressing anything past letter A first. And so none, no other parts of the process were thought about.
Do you follow my?
I do follow your.
Both my, whatever.
This is specific to five A and B.
So this is specifically just to change, we're at this point not changing anything in the process. We can bring it later on if we think, but considering we have a current opening, I would not be comfortable doing it at this point because we've already opened a posting and all of that. Wouldn't be comfortable in changing the process at this point. Now once we get through that process, gladly revisit how the expert panel and then how it moves into potential council consideration. But right now, not the time to do it because we're in the middle of a process. This was strictly to clean up the wording.
So that means that whatever, whatever candidate the panel sent to us, recommended by the panel, we have to hire him. So there is no point of setting interviews for everybody.
Well, so we're going to talk about that towards the end. That's, that's the other item to talk about. This particular resolution, though, is just to clean up the wording that may not be in line with certain orders.
Do you agree on my, on my assessment?
Well, I don't have B in front of me, but that, no, I don't agree because they make a recommendation. This is the way it's always worked. We've had the same policy. They make a recommendation. You haven't always hired the recommended candidate. You don't have to, I don't think that, I don't have that language, but I don't think it mandates that they hire. They make a recommendation, and then this body votes on it, vote it up or down, and then they make another.
Can you please look into it, in the language?
Yeah, I'll look at the language.
Appreciate that. And the staff, I know it's not there, but I think when the first place we should announce an opening should be here because I didn't even know he was retiring until I met, you know, somebody from the code who told me, hey, what do you think about? So.
So are you suggesting that the, the language be amended to include a city council meeting as one of the places for announcement? Because right now, what it says is we'll, we'll advertise on the website, X, Y, Z, these other places.
I would think that that would be, you know, because that's where we talk about the majority of things. I think that should be part of that.
You would have to.
Are you just wanting notification when someone's leaving? Or are you?
Yeah, if we have, if we have a head of department job opening, I think we should know about it. I didn't know about it until, like I say, until I talked with a department employee.
This is the, this is the recruitment policy, how you recruit and hire. I think, I think what he's saying is that one of the places where it should be announced is at a council meeting as well, that we are searching for a new department head. If you'd like to make an amendment, that is.
Yeah, I'll make a, make a motion to amend and add that language. That doesn't cost us anything. That just makes things, you know, more open to everybody.
Is this under A one, the advertising posting of the vacancy?
It would be somewhere in that second paragraph of A one.
That's fine. Okay, motion to add that, something about.
To add announcement at a city council meeting or work session.
You find your wording, yeah. She, she, she found it.
So I would think that right now it says.
I have a motion. Need a second on amendment.
They're questioning what the motion is, is the only thing.
Now, he's got a motion for an amendment. I was asking for a second. So motion dies for lack of a second. Back to the original resolution discussion.
Motion to send to council.
Motion, I think we already did that, actually. I can't even.
There was, yeah, there was motion for that, and then we were on discussion for that.
Okay, so are you all ready to vote on it? Are you all ready to vote on it? Councilman Fan. Councilman Fan, you ready to vote?
Hard.
You ready? I'm going to beat my head against this monitor. I say, y'all ready to vote?
Just say yes.
It's resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-three. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Moves forward unanimously. Item thirteen is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-four. It's resolution amending the City of Galveston Personnel Rules and Regulations sixteen, Section sixteen five. Ms. Ken, Jimmy, again.
This is another policy wording cleanup. So the way that our policy was written, it accepted certain circumstances or certain types of employees, including temporary, casual, provisional, and student. We have assessed and found that that is not necessarily in line with how the TCA defines employees. There are only certain exceptions where military leave would not apply. And so we've, we're asking to remove that from the policy to stay in line with the state regulations.
Motion by Councilman Carter. Second by Councilman Jones. Opening the floor for questions, discussion. Okay, this is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-four. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does move forward with unanimous support. Item fourteen is resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-five, resolutions, resolution amending the City of Galveston Personnel Rules and Regulations, Rule sixteen, Section sixteen one.
Let me pass out something real quick before I get into this. So what you have there is the survey that was sent in August 2025 to the fire department, to all members of the fire department. So the department requested that we conduct a department survey. You see a copy of it there to gauge the department's interest in returning to a modified time off in lieu of holiday setup. The survey was sent to 118 members. We received 78 responses, or 66 percent. So that's huge because usually surveys get like 10 percent. Out of those, 68 out of 78 respondents, or 88 percent, indicated that they would opt in to this particular kind of arrangement. This resolution just reintroduces language from previous iterations of the holiday policy strictly for the 56-hour employees, so only for fire. Both the department and the employees believe approving this change will positively affect employee morale. It's adding a small paragraph at the end of that particular policy.
Motion to send to council.
Councilman Juveant, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions? Any discussion? Councilman Juveant?
Thank you, ma'am, for bringing that and doing the survey. I think that's one of the most complaint I heard since that was changed because I think people who've never been on call, working on long shift, understand that sometimes money is not everything, and you rather spend time with your family than getting the dollar in your pocket. So I really appreciate that.
One else. It's resolution R two five oh nine dash sixty-five. All in favor of moving forward to council, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does move forward with unanimous support. Item fifteen is discussion pertaining to Code's official position posting and interview process. Ms. Ken, Jimmy.
Last one that I have today. And again, I have some packets. So let me pass these around. What's coming is candidate information. So just so you're aware. So the Building Electrical Fire and Gas Code's official position, so our Code's Department Director, was posted internally on August 18th for seven days and externally on August 19th through September 19th, in accordance with our policy and the way that it's currently written. Seven candidates applied. Only three met the minimum requirements of the position. So what you have in front of you is a single page, then there's a two-page for another candidate, and then an entire packet for a third candidate. We printed anything that they submitted to us for you. Their information has been provided to you for your consideration. We have partnered with MTAS to conduct a candidate assessment and scheduled it for the morning of Tuesday, October 7th. The assessment panel will consist of experts in the field and have been provided on a separate sheet of paper for your consideration, which is here. And one more.
Say October 7th?
October 7th. Yes, it's Tuesday.
Seven.
Seven.
Okay. Says you're not here.
I'm not here, but the team is prepared and ready, and MTAS is doing the whole thing. So the, the assessment panel consists of experts in the field, and you have those in front of you. According to our Personnel Rules and Regulations, the mayor and council must certify the list of qualified candidates, as well as the members comprising the expert panel. The mayor and council may also interview the candidates individually. I'm wondering which members of council wish to participate in that interview process? And does the afternoon of Tuesday, October 7th, work for any or all of you? And, or would you like to schedule another day after the expert panel does their assessment? So you want to be involved. I look to you, Mayor Brown, first and foremost, because I'm not sure how that works for your schedule, but.
No, I can make that work at some point during that day. Yeah, I can.
Are there any other council members who would like to be part of that interview process? Tuesday, October 7th. Not next week, the following week. And not next week, the following week, yeah. It is up to you. Every member of council is welcome to participate because ultimately the hiring separately, individually, your own little time. Not as a group, but because ultimately it is up to your vote to hire a department head. I will provide questions or suggested questions so that we stay in line with how things should probably be asked. I ask that you not deviate too far from those, but we can have a discussion if there's something you're really, really interested in knowing so we can get the wording right. Is that a question?
If council does vote on who that person is that's hired.
On this panel.
They do. They, well, they do an assessment. So you'll notice that I've put the type of assessment and what's being looked at.
Together and make the recommendation.
They individually score, and then the panel comes together to make a recommendation of a candidate or an order of candidates for you to consider. How it worked, I'll say in my case, was that their top scored candidate is the person you then consider first, and you decide if you want to go with that recommendation, or you open it to the next person on the list. I've only been through my own process, and then our city planner was the only one. So, but since we had three qualified candidates this time around, and we do have a highly recommended expert panel that was put together through MTAS.
So my question here that.
Are we open to questions? Is my only thing. I don't know. Do we, do we like?
Yeah, before.
Just open discussion? I didn't know. I don't know.
No, just because you say we need to approve the panel and the candidates. So do we do that tonight? Because if we send.
That is, that is my.
So we're not going to have time. So we can do that tonight? Our motion to approve.
Yeah, it's, and it's, and so it's just certifying the list for the panel to consider.
Motion by Councilman Juveant, second by Councilman Carter to certify the list of candidates in the expert panel. And the date?
And October 7th.
Eight?
Seventh.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, October eighth works.
Okay, seven, 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 okay. Is that, you said and the date, right?
No, I said seventh. There was an eighth over here, and I was like, no, you said the seventh.
The seventh. I thought you said the date. We're all tired at this point.
Date versus eight. Okay, I hear, I see, I feel the problem here now.
So it's October 7th or October 8th?
Seven.
It's a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
It is the seventh.
Okay. Good.
Question. Do I have a second, Councilman Carter? Was that you? Okay, any questions? Any discussion on certifying the? Okay, any questions, any discussion on certifying the candidates, the panel, and the date? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Done, Ms. Ken Jimmy.
And then please just double check, let me know if, for scheduling purposes, if you would like to have an individual interviewing session with the candidates.
Thank you, thank you. You had your hands full tonight, that is for sure. Okay, so that concludes the regular agenda. Brings us now to other business. I do have, let me ask if there's anybody up here that has any other business? Okay, I have a road closure, and this is for the 4th of October. It's for the cemetery tour. It would be from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM, and it's Cemetery Avenue from West Smith to West Winchester. Signatures are here of affected parties and department heads.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Carter, second by Councilman Jones. Any questions, any discussion? All in favor of approving this road closure application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is unanimously approved. Okay, we'll move now to department head reports, and I've got two on the agenda, but there may be others as well. So we'll start with Public Works Department. Mr. De Priest.
Mayor, in your packet, there is a really broad overview of report from each division of Public Works on the amount of work that was completed by the men and women of the Public Works Department to give you a little, little taste of how much work's being produced and how much work is being generated throughout the city, and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Sir, on behalf of this council, our compliments to Public Works because y'all's workload has gone up every year, and so have your department's skills, and we are very, very grateful for all that they do for the city. Ms. Nichols, monthly financial reports?
The monthly financial reports for June and July are included in your packet. I could not bring June reports forward until we closed the fiscal year, and that didn't occur until August. So the reports are there for your review. I know we just re-appropriated $7 million worth of carryover projects, but if you'll look at the general fund, it actually ended the year 7.4 million to the good. We had 7.4 million more in revenue than expenditure. So when we re-appropriate these projects, we break even for the year, so.
Pretty close to the budget, eh?
I like pointing out those things.
Yeah, pretty close to that original budget. That's awesome.
There's not a lot to look at in July because that's just the first month of the fiscal year, but we're, we're starting off and taking off, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. But I think we all just want to go home.
Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Nichols? Okay, thank you. Any other department heads with any reports, Ms. Bates?
Don't believe we meet next Tuesday, right?
That is correct.
So just want to remind everybody, and if you said this, I apologize, October 8th is the meeting that Boyle is having, the public meeting. It will be here in City Hall in this room, and our plan is to air it live, like a planning commission meeting is aired live, and also to have the recording for later. And this is all being facilitated by Boyle and Historical Concepts, which is not a meeting the city's having, although it is in City Hall. It's a meeting that Boyle is required to have per the MOU, but they've been meeting with other people too, so.
Thank you. I failed to have Angela put that on the list. I appreciate that. Anyone else, department heads? All right, one more motion. So move second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, I wish you a good night. Thanks for hanging through it all, and please have a great rest of the week and be kind to someone.